First. Test.
Barry, can you hear us in the chambers? Thank you. Counselor Kell, can you hear us in the chambers?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Apparently I have the Watts set that I like, but it doesn't have a minute hand. There we go. That's 5:30 PM. Good evening. Welcome to the Council Chambers for a special city council meeting tonight. The address is 10 West State Street. It's 5:30 PM on January 29, 2024. Because it's a special meeting, we typically dispense with the public participation of remarks at the beginning, and we dispense with the consul and city administrator and mayor remarks. We are called to order with those available. Help with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hoop.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Ladihov.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, and there's a consent agenda. Is anybody who moves to approve it?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Very good.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Are we going to have council comments or no?
We didn't have it on the sheet because the clerk reminded me that because it's a special meeting, we don't have either public comment or council comments.
Let me just say this. We had a library patron lose a baby, and the family and her lost a baby just recently. The family was kind and gracious enough to donate two strollers to the public library. They're special strollers that if you're coming into the library with a baby, they had your carrier, what those baby carriers, I guess they call them, you can drop them right into the stroller, and you can go around it through the library without having to carry your baby. I think I can speak for the town, city staff, and the city council. Our hearts go out to all of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Yeah, no, that's in order. I appreciate that. The library is such a wonderful resource, anyway. Let's call the roll on the motion.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Ladihov.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Onto resolutions.
Approve.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Approve the liquor license renewals for Casey's General Store, number 1303, at 111 North Third Avenue, Rumor Sports Bar at 309 South 12th Avenue Place, Wayward Social at 1101 South Sixth Street, Yes Way, number 1148 at 1701 Iowa Avenue East. Resolution 2024-024, approving the addendum between the City of Marshalltown and Region Six Resource Partners for General Administrative and Other Project Services.
Thank you. On resolutions, what's our first one there?
Resolution 2024-025, authorizing an agreement between the City of Marshalltown and MGT of American Consulting for city administrator recruitment and selection and use of council-designated local option sales tax.
Board is open for a motion.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion on this one.
Jill Petermeyer, Human Resource Director. So last week, we had talked about using GovHR for the recruitment of the city administrator if they would honor their $24,500 price. They actually have merged with MGT. That's why the name is different on here. It's the exact same staff and everybody, and they are willing to honor that price. So if the resolution gets passed tonight, I will begin work with them.
Other comments or questions up here?
Your Honor?
Yes.
My only comment would be is I think we should pause on the search for a few months, let things cool down with you or whoever is acting interim. So I move to table this.
I'll take that as, well, it is an amendment or a motion to table. Does require a second. As I recall, a table motion requires a two-thirds vote and is non-debatable. Let's call the roll on the motion to table.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Hoop.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Ladihov.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
It is stable. Okay. Until the next resolution.
Resolution 2024-026, approving the appointment of an interim city administrator.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Rather than call for discussion, because the resolution involves our chief of police, I would ask him to come and address us about it.
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. And it remains my honor and pleasure to serve you as your police chief for over 12 years now. I wish I wasn't here. You probably wish I wasn't here either. And I've struggled for a few days trying to figure out what I'm going to say, and you might be shocked to hear that I'm a little bit at a loss for words, but I'm going to do my best. I love this job. Love my job. I do love it a little bit less than I did last week, I'll be honest with you. But I love this community, and my love for this community is unwavering. I wasn't looking for more headaches in my life or more work in my life. I have plenty to do. I was asked about not quite a week ago if I would consider serving the community as your interim city manager. And after some discussion and thought and prayer, and against the advice of my wife, I agreed. I wanted to help. Wasn't looking for a full-time gig, just trying to help. And it was brought up last week, well, what is his qualifications for this type of job? So I'd like to just share what I think my qualifications are. 31 years of public service. The last 27 years in some sort of supervisory or management capacity. The last 20 years, almost 20 years, as a police chief in the state of Iowa. Successfully managed hundreds of people over the years, led projects. Two public safety building projects on my resume. I think it's fair to say that I have a ton of community support here. I understand the community. The community respects me, supports me. I can count on one hand the number of city council meetings I've missed in over 12 years here. So I understand the issues. I'm familiar with what we're trying to do. I've managed large projects, small projects, multimillion-dollar budgets, crisis and chaos, two natural disasters. I think I've been accomplished as a public service employee. And I know I could have done this job. No doubt in my mind, I had a plan. I was ready to start to work tomorrow. But I informed the mayor Saturday night that I'm no longer interested. I was astonished at what was allowed to happen in this chamber last Thursday night. The accusations that were leveled against me, absurd, baseless, unfounded. As the police chief, it's not a popularity contest. When I was hired more than 12 years ago, I was asked by my boss, Randy Wetmore, to be a change agent and to make some unpopular decisions, quite frankly. We reorganized the department twice. We've changed policies, procedures, protocols. We've addressed a lot of problems. And I stand confidently on my record here. And the community supports what we've accomplished. And I will not stand idly by and let somebody slander me, either in this chamber or via mass text messages, which are probably a violation of open meeting law. As I stated when I opened my comments, I love this community. We have a great community. We have important work ahead of us. And I think at times we spend far too much time in this chambers debating petty grievances. And we are failing to focus on the big issues that our community demands us to focus on. We have a lot of problems we have to solve, a lot of issues to address. So I am confident that I have the votes tonight to be appointed interim city manager, no doubt in my mind. I am confident that I have the support of the community to accept that job, but I am no longer interested. Take my name out of the hat. I am going back to work tomorrow as your full-time police chief, and I'm ready to move forward and tackle the work of the day. Appreciate your time, and I truly do appreciate the opportunity to be considered. I do appreciate that, and I appreciate what Marshalltown has done for me and my family. And I know that whatever you decide to do, we're going to be okay. Strong community, and we'll figure it out. So, thank you.
It's probably appropriate at this point to say that at the last meeting, I am embarrassed too that I let things go as far as they did, and I apologize about that. I had to walk the tight rope between what looked to me to be an employee matter that is ordinarily allowing the employee to have a closed session on the one hand, and then looking at vetting a candidate for a different position on the other hand. And I apologize for that, chief. And you know I've been part of your fan club since you got here. I remember interviewing you in this room with about six other candidates. And after meeting all seven, I thought you were the guy. I went up and met your wife and told you that. And I've been pleased to have you here since then. So, thank you. At this point, I think the motion is probably moot, but to make it official, we probably should take a vote. It's moot because if it is voted in favor, it's, we're not going to.
Is there no way to withdraw the motions now that it's seconded?
I think that's probably the way to do it.
I motion to withdraw.
All right. It's withdrawn. Let's go on to the next item.
Resolution 2024-027, terminating the lease agreement for the public use of the Marshalltown Arts and Civic Center.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director.
Motion to approve, your honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second. No discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So the agreement with the Marshalltown Arts and Civic Center was originally created through a tax levy. It's currently at $100,000 per year. And we're asking that this agreement be terminated at the end of this fiscal year. And if you want to continue to fund them, we need to create a new agreement.
It's my understanding that the actions by the legislature has changed, has actually made this an automatic situation for us.
Right. Statewide, there's no special levy for civic centers anymore.
And there's a deadline by the end of this month, I think.
Right.
Under the contract to terminate, so this is just official termination.
Correct.
And we will be able to address the future meetings if there is a shortfall and the legislature doesn't repair what it did to have this group come back and talk to us about funding then.
We're actually, they're actually going to be coming at a future meeting to discuss funding because it doesn't have to come through property taxes. It can be funded by other means.
Okay, thank you. With that, any comments or questions by the council?
Diana, this is basically a formality. Since there's no more local option or levy for this, we need to terminate this agreement because it's obsolete.
Right.
Same thing would be true with the levy involving the library and the musical band and things like that, I assume.
The band we do not have agreement with, but we do levy for them. And the library, we don't have an agreement with them since they're part of the city.
They're in the same boat with the Mack Building?
Right. Their levy is gone also.
Other council comments or questions? I know, I can sense, because I know many of the people from that board that's been operating over the years to get that building to the place that it is or here in support of it. There isn't public comment tonight, but I'd like you to stand if you're either on that board or supporting it. Thank you. Okay. Well, people, yeah, you'll be back, I know. Oh, you're out of order. I suggested I might do that, didn't I? Okay. You have to step to the mic and state your name, and I might have a few other questions, I think, too. Okay. Thank you. Unless anybody else has any comments up here, let's call the roll.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Carry on to discussion items, the first of which is our capital improvement plan that we all finally call CIP up here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Heather Thomas, Public Works. I'm out up here tonight representing the entire department head team. I think I drew the short straw, so bear with me, but if you do have questions on any specific items, the rest of the department heads are here to answer those as well. Tonight specifically, the item we're going to talk about is our CIP levy. This is a tax levy in the rate of .675. We are maxed out with the maximum we are allowed to levy against. And this levy is used for all of the departments to purchase non-routine things, whether that's equipment, vehicles, larger repair rehab type items as well. So there's three funds that we're going to talk about tonight. Fund O30, that is the direct source where the CIP levy goes in. Fund O32, 15% of that levy goes into O32 specifically to handle fire department and larger equipment purchases. And then we're also going to talk about levy and Fund O31, which is building maintenance. Historically, that has not been funded with the CIP levy. However, there is no ongoing funding source for the building maintenance fund. All of the items listed that are requesting funding from O31 are eligible to be funded from the CIP levy. So that's why we're kind of grouping them all, so we talk about all three funds at once. I'm going to open, actually. Okay, I'm going to go in through my memo because I hope it makes a little more sense as we go through that. First, I've included in my memo a list of five changes that we made from our previous draft that we brought to you in January 15. And then you will notice some pages that look like this. Within this grouping is a listing of all the requests from the department. You'll see the expenditures and uses listed out by departments. And within this, the first thing we wanted to do is we asked all of the department heads to go into fiscal year '25, which is the column there highlighted in blue, and to color code each project that was requesting funds in '25. Red means you felt like we could remove it from the fiscal year '25 to '28 budget, and we'll have another way to do what we were hoping, or we may change what we were hoping to do. Yellow means we'd like it to stay in the CIP, but it could be delayed to a future year. And green was, we feel it's very important to continue with in fiscal year '25. Once we did that, we reviewed again, knowing that we were still short money. The CIP levy revenue was still not going to cover the expenditures that we requested. So the department head team met on January 23 and talked through additional delays. And anything in this packet with red arrows pushing to future years was basically the offering of each department head to help try to balance that budget. I hope you guys have had a chance to go through page by page of that section. I'm going to go back up to some summary. So the first, the top of the table talks about what the initial department heads were requesting with the three funds. As you can see, we have the projected starting fund balance after fiscal year '24, what the anticipated revenue was going to be from the CIP levy, what the requested expenditures were, and what that puts the ending balance in fiscal year '25 and then projecting it out to fiscal year '26. After we made that last attempt in late January to again delay projects, we've re-updated that table and information here. There's two specific projects that we wanted to talk through a little bit. Earlier this year, actually it would be last year, there was a lot of discussion about building maintenance. And at that time, department heads took away from some of our discussions and work sessions with council that they really wanted us to be more transparent in some of the building maintenance needs that were not happening because of budget shortfalls. So Fund 31 that we've included in here are a lot of those items. One of the projects is replacing the east entrance door and steps. So this is the main entrance into the vestibule and the clerk's window and the accounting window up front. These are the original, what we believe to be the original limestone steps into that area. Attempts to repair them have been made many, many times and patched. With the Main Street project that's coming through, all of the sidewalk will be torn up with that project. And so the opportunity to replace these or address those ahead of or in conjunction with this project is something we wanted to make sure you guys were all aware of. I've thrown some pictures in here, but it is spalling of the limestone surface. If council wants to keep them as is, that's okay. We just would like that direction from you. If that's the direction, we'll probably try to grind on them a little bit more and probably find a sealant to try to help preserve them longer than they are. Another option would be to continue funding it and funding it out of the O31 and how you guys choose to fund O31. And a third option would be to remove it from a standalone project and incorporate it into the Main Street project. That doesn't provide funding for it as that project is still short funds. But those are a couple of options on the table for that specific item. Before I go on to the next item, are there any specific questions on that piece? Okay. The next item is park and rec funds, approximately one park improvement project a year at $150,000. In fiscal year '25, the Timber Creek Park Improvement Project is slated to be up, ready to be worked on. Right now, we show $150,000 in the fiscal year '25 CIP Fund O30 budget for that project. In an effort to reduce the draw on that fund, we've got two options for you. One is to look at the council-designated $250,000 that aside from the ATE revenue and take a portion of that to help fund that project. One thing I do want to mention is Chief Tupper reminded us all that there is no guarantee that that money is going to be there forever. There's discussion in the state legislator that that could potentially go away. And so best not to rely on that in its entirety. And then Jeff also indicated that there's several other planned park improvements coming up during fiscal year '25, including finishing the Quanis Park, finishing Peterson Park, and Phase 1 of Riverview Park, that he would be okay with also delaying the Timber Creek Park Improvement and the remainder ones that come after that to future years. So I'm going to scroll down to where you see that on your screen. So that is a very brief overview of kind of the situation we're in. Again, we're short money to be able to fund projects in O30, O31, and O32. Department heads have gone in and made some offerings to try to help delay projects or change projects to bring the revenue and expenditures in close for order. And with that, I'm going to open it up for questions and then likely invite my department heads, fellow department heads up to help answer those.
Before that happens, two quick things. One, I usually invite people that come for a specific purpose to not have to stick around and don't feel embarrassed if you get up and leave unless you really find this enthralling. We're happy to have you here, but I know people are sometimes embarrassed to leave, so you can do that. And two, I think there's another $100 coming in on that ATE thing because it's dangerous to drive and talk on a cellphone as you're leaving town on Lincoln Way.
Your honor, I got a question or comment. So if we have safety issues like what those steps are, we need to fix those right away. So I think that's a perfect spend of lost. So, you know, if you guys could figure out what you need, let us know, and let's get that taken care of.
Would you like a safety for a short term or safety for a long-term fix?
Depends on the dollar amounts. You know, if you could get us those numbers, then we'll decide if that's all right.
Okay.
Other comments or questions by other consulates?
Mr. Mayor?
Heather did a great job presenting this stuff. And one thing I just wanted to comment on, you'll notice in the police department section, CIP budget, generally we have been spending $15,000 a year on body cameras, and I made that a red. We're not going to do that this year. But I just want to remind you, we are working on a project where we have to replace all of our body cameras and all of our car cameras because our vendor no longer supports the products that we have. We don't know what it's going to cost us yet. It's going to be big. I was initially guessing maybe somewhere between $315,000 and $400,000. It might be $500,000. And there will be ongoing general fund expenses associated with this because everybody wants us to store our data now in the cloud. us to store our data now in the cloud, and that becomes a general fund expense. So we have a committee working on this project. I do not anticipate coming to you for money this calendar year, but at some point, I am going to come to you with proposals, and we're going to have to discuss how we handle this in the future. Because these cameras are no longer optional equipment. My cops will not work without their body cameras. I don't want them to work without their cameras. And we're going to have to figure that out down the road. So for now, the budget is what it is, and we're good to go. But I just wanted to make sure that I've been reminding you periodically, and I don't want you to forget, that this is a big issue we're going to have to tackle at some point. Thank you.
Any other consular have any questions or comments at this point, or should we keep going forward, Heather?
I would ask for some level of direction and motion from council. All of these changes that we're presenting tonight require them, require us to change it in multiple software systems to be able to continue this budget process.
I saw move. What would you move?
I move we keep moving forward, just like we were with the recommendations made by the department head, and that we just keep seeing where things are going.
Okay, so to clarify that motion, we would make the changes as shown in the red on the following pages, and we would be looking at this second part, second half of the table.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Roll call.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Carried staff has direction on that one.
Thank you. We'll continue in the realm of CIPs. And I think on this one, we're presenting the second draft of the city's full capital improvement plan for all departments, not just funds O thirty, O thirty-one, and O thirty-two. In your packets, there is the CIP plan presented in two different ways. I know we have some new consulates, so I just wanted to go over real quick the best way to be able to read these. In the document, that's projects and funding sources by departments. Each capital project is listed out with the funding sources below it, estimated expenses and revenue. The three-digit number is the fund. And so we've sorted it out. This report is by department. And then the report that's called sources and uses of fund is separated by fund number. Are there any questions with that? I was not planning on going through this line by line. There's quite four-hundred pages, I want to say, of items. But if there are specific questions you have on any of them, we can answer those tonight. Otherwise, our plan would be to continue refine this and put the third draft of the CIP on a future meeting for another review for you guys.
If there aren't any questions or comments by the council, you can proceed that way. Keep going. Discussion item number two, we're on to evaluations.
So we got our final, hopefully final, evaluations last Friday. So to give you some history, I printed out historically what we've got in the last several years. So we had a point-six-three increase in fiscal year twenty-two in assessed values, five-point-ten percent in FY twenty-three, went back down to two percent in FY twenty-four, and we had a huge increase of sixteen-point-seven-one percent for fiscal year twenty-five. So normally, we would be jumping with joy with that big of valuations. However, due to the state making some restrictions on us, the rollback, for example, the residential rollback went from fifty-six percent in FY twenty-four to forty-six percent in FY twenty-five. So that was a big hit we took. The backfill for commercial industrial property continues to decrease every year by forty-six-thousand. And our TIF increase, which lowers our valuations as well. So I wanted to show you another sheet. Let me pull it up here. So what this sheet is telling you is that if we, if House File seven-eighteen didn't pass, and we took our valuations for FY twenty-five and placed them in the form that we've always used, which is the eight-ten regular levy, funding the civic center, the band, the library, and emergency levy, we would have generated eight-point-eight million dollars. Now that all those levies are gone, there is a consolidated rate, so the rate's a little bit higher, but the amount of dollars that we're able to generate is only eight-point-five. So just to start with, we're already down two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars through the House File seven-eighteen. So before we go on to the budget, you can see how that plays into things. Is there any questions on this?
Go ahead.
Okay. Next item. Can I go ahead to the next item? Okay. So we know we were going to probably take a hit, which we did, on House File seven-eighteen. In addition to other items for expenses, we saw wages are going up, our health insurance is going up, our property insurance is going up. We did put in the budget the hundred thousand dollars for the Arts and Civic Center. We did put in eight thousand for the band. They lowered it from the levy of nine thousand from the prior year. We accounted for everything we would normally account for, basically status quo budgets, except for we saw increases in utilities and other products. So when all is said and done, we have a deficit of one-point-one million dollars. So we normally come to you, we try and have different options for you to pick from. This isn't unusual. We come to you every year. We're always in a deficit when we put all the numbers together. So we want to walk through this and want you to help us with some items and discuss some items. And then at a future meeting, we can put it in ink rather than pencil. But we just wanted to kind of go through this, so. Let me pull this up. So you can do a combination of things, both from the revenue side and the expense side. So we're going to talk about the revenue side first. So over fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, we had allocated ARPA funds to cover the deficits back then. We never used the amount of two-hundred-and-one thousand dollars. So we're suggesting that that be used for this purpose for fiscal year twenty-five. Another revenue source is the hotel motel tax. Currently, we give the chamber fifty-six percent. We can lower that to fifty percent. So that would save us thirty-six thousand that we could put in the general fund. Automated traffic enforcement. We split this many ways. So we were estimating five-hundred thousand after the contractor payment for the ATE operation of the system. Five-hundred thousand would be left over. So one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand was going to the Arts Council. One-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand was going for public safety equipment, which leaves two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which we originally said would go towards community beautification and nuisance. So you could reallocate some or all of that money if you would like. You'd take probably another resolution. And then we have local option sales tax. So to get it, to cover the entire deficit, those are your revenue sources. So now we can go down to the expenditure side. So as mentioned earlier, the library levy is no more. It's just part of the regular general fund budget. So to recapture some costs, the library, again, this needs to be passed by the Library Board of Trustees, but these are some things that are, were thrown out. Could close on Sundays. That would save six thousand for utilities and supplies.
Sarah question?
Yep.
Or actually, probably Sarah question. What is the busiest day of the library's use and what is the least busy?
Sarah Resimblin, Library Director. I'm afraid I don't have that information at hand, and I apologize. I should. I will tell you, when we first opened on Sundays, Sundays were the busiest hours per hour. We were only open three hours. When we were opened after COVID, we reopened after COVID. We're now, actually, we did look. We know now that Saturdays are actually busier than Sundays. We did look, did take a look at that. I'd have to get the other information for you, but we can do that with our door count. So, yes.
Just how it feels is like Wednesday or Tuesday, a real dead week, day or not. Definitely, I think that was different.
You know, I always say Mondays because people are like, oh, I'm going to start my life. I'm going to come to the library on Monday. I worked this morning on the information desk. It was very quiet for the most part. So there's really no rhyme or reason. Sometimes it depends on weather, depends on what's happening in the community. You know, right now, it's tax season, so we're starting to see a lot of folks. And that's going to rev up as August fifteenth, April fifteenth rolls around, and we have people coming in for their tax forms. So.
So when the library levy passed, part of it was being open on Sundays. So that's why we picked Sundays. They're only open for four hours on Sundays rather than a full day. So they also put in the volunteer coordinator position, which was also added when the levy was passed, so estimating that at thirty-four thousand dollars. And then any additional costs allocated from the original levy, which was two-hundred-and-fifty-one They're considering not operating the library mobile outreach vehicle if budgets are cut. This is very staff-intensive. That could save nine thousand dollars between the insurance, gas, et cetera. This was talked about, well, this was shown in your CIP levy that Heather presented. We could move the library collection to be funded by the CIP Fund Zero Three Zero. So that'd be one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. There we go. People can see.
Okay. What are the rules on capital improvement?
Books are considered because they last, the hardbound lasts more than a year. They're not considered a supply.
Is that what the rules are?
Yeah.
Hardbound and softback.
And print, and, well, all print collection. Actually, I did some research. Cedar Rapids and Marion both use CIP for their book budget. It was very common in the California libraries that I worked in. So as she said, a lot of our books, some of them, you know, last five, ten years. A lot of them last longer than a copy machine. So it is a way, though, to help take some of the stress off the general fund.
And we talked about the MAC for a hundred thousand dollars since that levy's been repealed. Could find another revenue source for that, such as local option sales tax. Band, same thing, eight thousand. Put in two FTE vacancies for primarily the police department. When we budget, we fully, fully fund every position that we have. We know over the course of the year that positions turn over, that there's going to be some kind of savings in vacancies. So we were using two FTE police, police staff for that. If you delay the implementation of the three percent cost of living adjustment for non-union staff, that was until January of twenty-twenty-five rather than July, next July, that would save ninety-seven thousand five hundred. If you leave the housing director position open, that would save around seventy-three thousand in the general fund. That position is split many different ways, including some grants. But that's just the general fund portion. You would need to consider the workload of other people, and if that would bump up their pay grade, if they're doing higher functioning duties. And then some other, some other items are more programmatic. So summer blasts, you could raise fees, change hours. Same thing for Aquatic Center. And then we have other vacant positions unfilled right now. We're advertising for them, but they are unfilled. So that, those savings, without the question marks, is over half a million dollars. So like I said before, ARPA, kind of a no-brainer. It was already set aside for deficit reduction, so we could use that one. We normally use local option sales tax. And then I need direction on the rest.
Your Honor, I'd give direction to use ARPA and local option sales tax and then make some adjustments, move those out of the general fund with the idea that we'll try to fund them from a different revenue source.
I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion up here?
Yeah, I would, if I may, Your Honor. Sorry, I can't. Yeah, I would like to honor what, or echo what Consular Schneider said. We were talking about all of our revenue sources. We have the funding available for local option sales tax. The council immediate use purposes, this seems very appropriate for several reasons. One, we're basically a month behind in starting the budgeting process. We need to, as council, need to remember that the voters in Marshalltown approved those special levies, even though the state took them away from us. We, we need to recognize that the community showed support and conveyed to us that there's a need for it. So there's an opportunity to honor that. And then third, I know we have a council composition change from when we approved it, but I would encourage council to remain disciplined with the usage of ATE funds. It was prevented and sold to the public, that it was a public safety issue, not a budget backfill or revenue source. And it appears in a very short period of time, we're going back on that commitment to the city. So for all those reasons, I support the motion Jeff Schneider brought forth.
Thank you. Other council comment? I agree with, I agree with Barry and Jeff. I think it's very appropriate to backfill with local option sales tax for the library, also for the MAC building. These are community services that are very much used, and they're needed in this community. And it's using, I think it's an excellent use for local option sales tax, making the library whole. And that would include picking up the two vacant positions right now, continuing with I'm in full support of that. Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Nichols?
Can I ask a question at this time, or am I in order? Good question. I guess I would ask the city administrator for an answer on that one, and I'd say you're okay to speak.
Oh, this is my question. We're working through budget options at this point in time. We're not locking anything in, right? We have the ability to be flexible and think about this because, you know.
It has to come back to us.
It has to come back to us.
And all we can do at this phase, since we're in discussion, is direct staff to continue.
Plan it, right? Keep working on the agenda.
Yeah. Yes?
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Cal?
Yes.
Staff has the direction as that motion did carry. Thank you. And our next item is special meeting for February 5, 2024. Did I miss one? No? Okay, good. Do we really need discussion on that? I think it's been a consensus, we need to have a special meeting to try to catch up on this budgeting process.
I see them nodding their head over there, so yeah, I think they should. I'd direct staff to schedule one.
February 5, here, 5:30, special meeting. Mr. Lottie Hoff will cover for me again because I'm down in Texas watching Iowa State beat We, actually, before we adjourn, I would like to say, we all got a memo today from our city attorney, who I think was on board here. We do have to be careful as a consul about how we handle things that are involving the daily operations of the city and involving staff. And the other thing that I want to alert you to is I have some discretion about whether there is discussion. In special meetings like this, we don't usually do it. But I want to alert you that I will be asking staff to consider doing what other cities like Des Moines and some others have done in terms of having public comment. We moved it from the end to the beginning for people that just wanted to come and talk about something special to them, so they didn't have to sit here until 6:20 to have their say. Because we have a bunch of agenda items, then, I'll be asking the staff to consider that we switch our rules of procedure to allow us comment at the beginning of the meeting on any items also on the agenda, and maybe up to time from three minutes to five minutes. I think that will speed up our meetings, and we'll see if the council goes along with that. But as long as we have a pretty good full house tonight, I wanted to let you know that's what I've been considering doing, and we'll ask the council to consider that. With that, we are adjourned at 6:20. Thank you for coming.